Good afternoon, everyone. This is, it's Tuesday, February 8th. This is our voting meeting for the Prescott City Council. So we can start off our meeting here with introductions and announcements. Mayor Protam, do you have any?
Yes, of course. I have some very exciting ones. We have online registration for the City of Prescott Household Hazardous Waste Collection, and it begins next Monday on February the 14th, Valentine's Day, so it gives you a chance to show how you love Prescott. This is a curbside pickup event for residential utility customers only, which translates to if you get a bill from the city water department, you are eligible. The collection will begin on Monday, March 7th. So pre-registration is required to participate. So please call 928-777-1116, or you can go to our website, prescott-az.gov, and click on the Household Hazardous Waste Event to schedule your appointment. Let's keep hazardous waste out of our water treatment plants and dispose of it properly. Another big announcement is the Prescott Fire Department has implemented an alternate response unit in their emergency response system. This gives the fire department the opportunity to improve response times, improve unit reliability, save wear and tear on the fire engines, and finally provide better service to our citizens. The unit is called AR-76, and there is more information at the city website. So hopefully, we will be using less fire trucks to answer medical calls. And last, we have just learned that the Hilton Garden Inn on Monizuma was one of the top 4% of Hilton Gardens in performance around the U.S. and Canada. Congratulations to our friends and the Shumways at the Hilton Garden Inn. And also, let's note that it's very popular with the locals too, and not just our out-of-town visitors. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protam, and I want to say a very happy birthday to the state of Arizona. Next Monday, not only will it be Valentine's Day, but the 110th birthday of the state of Arizona became a state on February 14th, 1912.
Nice.
So we will now have an invocation from Pastor Dennis Baker from the Mount Vernon Church of Christ.
Good afternoon. Would you pray with me? Our Father, today we acknowledge your important role in our lives and your guidance and your providence as we carry on this important work today. We begin this meeting and recognize the active role that you have in the affairs of people. We recognize that you care about what happens today as much as we do for these decisions and actions of the council affect all who are created in your image. We recognize that you are a God of justice and mercy, and may the statutes and conclusions that are voted on today benefit the citizens of the city of Prescott in a way that is equitable for all. Father, help us act with character and conviction. Help us listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of authority entrusted by people to do this important work. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with reverence that your creation deserves. Father, in our hearts, we plan our course, but we pray that you establish our steps. I pray that we seek you for advice. Let us not make decisions based upon only what we know, but help us act upon your wisdom. Again, we ask for your guidance. And we, and receive our thanks on behalf of all those who are gathered here today. We thank you for the resources that enable us to do what needs to be done. We are thankful for the family members who support the important work of those on the council. Thank you for the health that we enjoy and the things and gifts that we can use at this time to lead this community. We pray that the things we talk about today bring you honor. We also want to bring before you the names of the individuals who currently lead our city that are assembled here today. We pray for Phil Good, for Kathy Rusing, for Brandon Montoya, for Eric Moore, for Jessica Hall, for Steve Sishka, for Clark Tenney. Father, renew them with strength that is overwhelming, that comes from your presence, and with the joy that fills those who do important work and help them build a community worthy of the people who live in Prescott. Because you're here and you care, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Counselman Moore, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Thank you. My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll have a roll call now.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Hall.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present.
Thank you. We'll now have the open call to the public.
So as a reminder, residents are welcome to address council during the open call to the public on matters that are not on the posted agenda. Please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me. Speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total. Again, council may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, and therefore, this will just be an opportunity for the public to comment on issues that are addressing, that are facing our community. I have not received any public comment cards. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council?
Here we go.
Thank you, Nancy Beulie.
Ready? Good afternoon. It's a beautiful day outside. I'm a little sunburned from working and working out at the beautiful Willow Creek Inn. It's two weeks since we met, since we talked. We've made a great stride in accomplishing two of the large hurdles that we had with obtaining our permit. We have the one last one standing. We would like to submit to our building and planning departments that we ask for a 99 or less certificate or occupancy rate calculation based on the square footage, the nature of what we're doing in the Willow Creek Inn, the plans for fixed seating, and in A2 restaurant status. Gentlemen, we have obtained a professional council that have already reached out to speak with you today. We understand that Tuesday was already a busy day. It's not an inexpensive venture, but I have been put into a corner that I've needed to do that, as I've not been able to get a response to speak with anybody. So at this point in time, we are reaching out the laurel leaf to be able to come to an agreement peacefully, civilly, hopefully not too much more financially. On that stick of the laurel leaf, there's two sides. We hope that you will reach it, reach out for it, and it'll extend it back to me so that we can bring the beauty of the Willow Creek Inn back to this community, that I will be able to answer with honesty, booking my events. I have turned down dozens and dozens and dozens in this last two weeks. Financially, I'm being really, really strapped and forced to sell a lot of personal property in order to carry on. So it is with that laurel leaf that I hope we can all come to an agreement and just diffuse this erroneous outrageously five-months process, eight months since I first came to the planning and zoning department. And with that, I thank you for my time to be able to speak with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Well, that's kind of surprising, considering some of the comments we've seen. I did want to clarify that the public announcement of limitation to organized groups was really directed at organized groups. So if there is a organized group that wants to address the council during the open call to the public, we would request that they have a designated speaker to bring their issues forward. But otherwise, if there's a group of neighbors or other individuals that want to talk about an issue in their neighborhood or some other issue, they're certainly welcome to utilize the call to the public. So with that said, we will move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have a request to remove a consent agenda item? Well, I do. So I'd like to pull Item 7B. So do I have a motion for the remaining items?
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through C.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Is it, or D?
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Sishka, I just need you to amend your motion.
I thought it was B?
It's 7 through D excluding, is it B or D?
Okay, I'm in my motion to say A, C, and D.
Thank you.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Well, the reason I decided to pull that is because looking at the actual agreement, in fact, you might want to read what the agreement is. City clerk, please.
So Item 7B is adoption of Resolution Number 2022-1807, approving City Contract Number 2022-148, an intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County Board of Supervisors and the Yavapai County Recorder for Ongoing Election Services.
So if you read the actual agreement, there are two options: to either agree without any discounted rates that the county would provide, or to agree to a discounted rate but with the requirement that two of four different services be selected by the city. Also, this is a two-year contract that would run through 2024, and it's primarily designed to be able to bring cities and municipalities in line with the state requirements for elections on even years. As you know, under our city charter, we have elections on the odd years. So clearly, we don't have the option of electing the two-year option, which would require some of these additional services be provided to the county during the election process. So we have to decide to elect the option that says we will not be included in the discounted rates.
So I just wanted to provide some clarification, if I could, Mayor. This contract is one that we have had with the county for many years. It's an ongoing option to allow them to continue to conduct our elections, with myself as the certified elections officer for the city of Prescott. As Mayor alluded to, we do conduct our elections per city charter in odd-numbered years rather than in line with state and federal elections in even-numbered years. There are a number of reasons that we do that, primarily when municipalities conduct consolidated elections. The local elections have a tendency to be at the very bottom of the ballot, and then oftentimes, those are overlooked by the voters of the community. So in order to receive the discounted services from the county, which we have never elected to do in any of our past agreements with them, we would have to provide services in accordance with the options that we would theoretically select within the agreement during their election years. So that would mean that we would conduct our elections in our normal timeframe, and then my office would also have to provide services to the county during their election years. So it'd be running an election all of the time. In addition to that, the discount is actually only 25 cents per registered voter. We currently pay $2.25 per registered voter to have this IGA with the county, and if we were to select to provide those additional services to the county, our cost would be $2 per registered voter rather than $2.25 with the additional cost of our staff to conduct those additional services.
So it's not a substantial difference.
No, it's not.
But the materials that were provided for us to vote on did not, had those two options unchecked. So I just wanted to make sure that we understand that we are electing an option under five where it says the jurisdiction has elected to decline to receive the discounted rates. Should we consider the other option, we'd actually have to amend our city charter, because the city charter requires us to have our elections on odd years. So at this point, I will move to approve. Second. Well, let me read it. Adoption of Resolution Number 2022-1807, approving City Contract Number 2022-148, the intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County Board of Supervisors and the Yavapai County Recorder for Ongoing Services, with the selected option of this jurisdiction has declined to receive discounted rates.
Now I will second.
I have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, we will move on to the regular agenda.
Liquor licenses first, actually.
Oh, yeah, we have to do liquor licenses first. So let's start off with Number 8A.
Public hearing in consideration for a new Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License Application from Amy Nations, applicant for Barbudos, location 1042 Willow Creek Road, number 107. Application fees have been paid, and the signs have been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the applications and determined that they are in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
Is the applicant here in the chambers?
I don't see her.
Apparently not. Well, we can, I will, somebody want to make a legitimate action here?
I'm just going to say that this is technically a public hearing, so if anyone from the public would like to speak on this matter, you may, before we shut down the public hearing.
Mayor, I'll move to close the public hearing, seeing no comments from the public. Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I'll move to approve Liquor License Number 175019 for a new Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Barbudos, location 1042 Willow Creek Road, number 107. Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to 8B.
Public hearing in consideration for a new Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License Application from, I apologize if I pronounce this name incorrectly, Akansha Ashwin Chowdhury, applicant for Prescott Arco, location 80286 Walker Road. The application fees have been paid, signs have been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the applications and determined that they are in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Please.
It's a gas station.
Come forward. We need to have her comments recorded.
It's a gas station, and we intend to sell beer and wine licenses.
Well, I appreciate that, and thank you. Any questions you have at the council?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We can move to...
Mayor, seeing no public comment, I move to close the public hearing. Second.
Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve Liquor License Number 176503 for a new Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Prescott Arco, location 286 Walker Road. Second.
Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Okay. Now we'll go to item Liquor License, Item 8C.
Oops, sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, I have to recuse myself. Do you, do I need to physically leave for this, just one item? Yeah. Yeah, okay, great. Bring her back in afterward, then with the vote. Thank you. Awesome. Public hearing in consideration for a new Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License Application from Barry Lee Barb, applicant for Torme, location 802 Valley Street. Application fees have been paid, the signs have been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has received, reviewed the application and determined that they are in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Come on up, Barry.
How are you doing?
Good, thanks, Barry. How are you today?
Good. Tell you what it is, or?
Yeah, just give us an explanation. I know that used to be rustic.
Well, it's hopefully going to soon be, yes, it was. And I hope it's going to soon be Torme, which is a contemporary Italian bistro, homemade pastas, starting with lunch only. We'll have some outdoor dining. We'll also have a small area in the back, we're calling her Caccina, which will have a grab-and-go concept, as well as a small deli. So that's it.
Well, it's great to see that location be resurrected, so to speak.
It's looking good. I'm happy with it, yeah.
Does Torme have anything to do with Mel?
There might be a connection there or something. It could be.
When are you opening up, Barry?
As soon as possible. As soon, hopefully, I've been in there since July, so we're hoping soon.
So it's about time?
Yeah, it's about, it's about time. It's about time, yeah. But it's worth it. It's going to be good. But it's worth it, so thanks.
Great to see another specialty restaurant in that location, and certainly helps have more options for our, for our evening diners throughout the city, so thanks very much, Barry.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, seeing no public comment, I would move to close the public hearing. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Mayor, I would move to approve Liquor License Number 176655 for a new Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Torme, location 802 Valley Street. Second.
Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes 6-0. Now we can do the regular agenda.
Very good. Now we can move to the regular agenda.
Legislative update.
So first item is our legislative update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'm Tyler Goodman with the city manager's office, here with the fascinating legislative update. I know it's your favorite part of every meeting. Just as a general overview, there have been over 1,400 bills introduced so far, and upcoming deadlines, the bill, the deadline to introduce bills has passed, but February 18th is the last day to hear Senate bills in the Senate and House bills in the House, in their committees, I should say. So we are approaching that deadline, which means that's a pretty good milestone to know how things are progressing. You've probably received a lot of email blasts about House Bill 2674. This is the one that has taken shape. I mentioned a couple weeks ago in my update that the legislature is focusing on affordable housing, and I can do air quotes with that, because there's a lot of debate on whether or not this bill would accomplish that. So this, it's a lot of information, but if you'll bear with me, I want to go through it, because it is very important. The bill is lengthy, it's very detailed, but it really is the most important thing happening right now. The League is putting all of its resources behind stopping it. I talked with Barry Aaron's yesterday. He is signing in as opposed for the city of Prescott. I just learned about an hour ago that it was stricken from the committee hearing this afternoon, so I'm assuming there's been enough feedback and pushback that they took it off the agenda for today's committee hearing. That's good news, and I think that we'll hopefully see either it stop completely, that would be ideal, or maybe enough amendments, but I don't know if you can get enough amendments on this one to make it worthwhile. So I'll go through it quickly, but the bill establishes a byright housing, and it doesn't really come with any obligation to make units affordable. There's no guarantee of that outcome. So for example, multifamily developments would be allowed byright in existing agricultural, single-family residential, commercial districts, and all districts supporting single-family dwellings, commercial or mixed uses in the general plan. That could include multifamily buildings up to 75 feet if it's in certain areas, close enough to a freeway, highway, transportation corridor, the definitions go on, but it would allow that height. Single-family and two-family units would be allowed byright anywhere except industrial lots where there's adjacent industrial already existing. So that opens the playing field almost entirely. Additionally, eight single-family structures per acre and 12 two-family structures per acre would be allowed byright in agricultural and single-family lots. Multifamily developers, they could essentially ignore zoning districts, zoning codes, design standards, building codes, and multifamily projects would be approved administratively with no public process. I don't think anybody wants that. Residents would have zero notice, no opportunity to learn about the projects. It would basically skip P and Z, a lot of council action. It sounds like a dream that I'm telling you all this, right? That this could actually be real.
Kind of a nightmare.
Or a nightmare, I should say, yeah. So essentially, it eliminates single-family zoning throughout the state of Arizona. It just removes it. It preempts cities, even charter cities, in all housing matters, and it states that very explicitly at the beginning of the bill. It violates general plans, general plan statutes, Voter Protections Act. It, like I said, eliminates citizen review for residential multifamily development, prohibits zoning districts, regulations that restrict housing, and kind of on and on and on. Also, it could affect our ability to enforce the WUU code, right? So we have building materials and things that protect those structures from wildfires. That would probably be seen as too onerous, so we wouldn't be able to enforce those types of things. As you can see, that is, and I was thinking this morning, this might be one of the worst bills I've ever seen. And I've, I haven't been around terribly long, but I've seen a lot of bills, and this is, this is an absolutely terrible one. So like I mentioned, the League of Cities is all over this. Barry Aaron's is all over it. I think we have, from every direction, we even have Historic Preservation all over it. A lot of statewide organizations on housing and who have anything to do with this are all over it, and for the most part, nobody likes this at all, so we are...
Well, I got to tell you that I had conversations with both of our state representatives this morning, extended my extreme concerns on how much of a horrible impact this could have on our community itself. I think it's just another example of legislative overreach to the extreme, where one representative in the Phoenix area has a problem with not enough workforce housing, so we're going to punish the entire rest of the state. And it's almost always the rural communities who have to bear the brunt of these kinds of bills. So our ability to require low-water-use landscaping, setbacks, height restrictions to make sure that they don't impact our airport impact area, there are just so many consequences that would be so detrimental to our community. I think I made that perfectly clear to both Representative Burgess and Winn, that we really want to make sure they do everything they can to make sure this bill either dies appropriately or never sees the light of day. Counselman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Tyler, do you have a sense of, like, I mean, it sounds like this is a widely unpopular bill, but do you, I mean, does Barry or does anyone down there have a sense of if this thing is actually going to get traction at this point, or?
That's a question I asked Barry yesterday, and he said it, and I should have mentioned, it does have bipartisan support as far as it being introduced, it's both the Republican and Democrat who have teamed to introduce it. Barry has told me that there is more support for it from the legislature than he expected, but he wasn't sure if it was enough to get it over the finish line. And I'm guessing that with the amount of pushback happening right now, that support might wane a little bit.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Counselmember, excuse me, Mayor Protam Rusing.
Thank you. Who were the two representatives that sponsored this bill? And was there, who were the lobbyists? What group was it that was behind it?
The two that introduced the bill are Representative Kaiser and Representative Chavez. And from my understanding, I don't know the individual, either lobbyist or specific group... and from my understanding, I don't know the individual, either lobbyist or specific groups, but it's, it was basically the development community, but beyond that, I'm not sure specifically.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you, I'll touch on just a couple more, just to give you an update. The tobacco bill that I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, that would establish the retail license and preempt us from regulating sales and marketing of tobacco, and also place restrictions on zoning, that has been assigned to two committees in the Senate, it has not yet been heard in Senate Commerce, but will be heard today in Senate Appropriations, it probably already has been heard, or is being heard as we speak. Gun in public buildings, this is from last year as well, this bill would pretty much put an unfunded mandate on us to provide people and metal detectors unless we were to allow CCW permit carriers to bring guns into the building. That passed House Government seven to five and the Rules Committee, so it's awaiting floor action. I, I don't have a sense on how well supported that is, it didn't get support enough last year to make it, so we'll see if there's any difference this year, but I think it made it a little further in the process than this last year. Senate Bill 1275, and it has a companion bill, House Bill 2226, on fireworks, this would actually help us regulate fireworks and when they're used in the city limits. It's a good bill for cities, it passed Senate Commerce seven to two in rules, and it also passed House Military Affairs and Public Safety and Rules, so it's also awaiting floor action in both chambers.
Councilman Montoya, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Tyler, going back to HB 2316, you said it would create an unfunded, or a mandate for us to provide, do you, we have any idea of what the cost for the city of Prescott, for instance, would be on that?
I, I can find you the number that we had last year, I can't remember off the top of my head, but we calculated with the help of the League, what would this cost if to hire, hire enough personnel to man a metal detector 24/7 at the entrances of the building, and as well as the equipment itself, it was in the hundreds of thousands to start and then ongoing for personnel costs.
And in theory, that would affect every government building within the city of Prescott, essentially?
Correct, yeah, yeah, cities, counties, and unless you were just to allow concealed carry permit holders to bring guns in the building.
Okay, thank you.
And finally, House Bill 2375, this has to do with the urban revenue sharing that we receive, this bill would preempt cities and towns from using that for anything other than public safety. A lot of cities have concerns, number one, if they don't have their own police department, if they contract with a sheriff's department or a fire district, for example, but also it's just the premise of us wanting to control the revenues that are coming to us that have been legislated and agreed upon for many decades, to be able to use the money that is rightfully to our taxpayers, and to have the council use it as you can legally do so and not be boxed into this particular case. And that's gonna be heard in committee tomorrow at 9:00 AM. With that, I'm happy to answer any other questions that the council may have.
Has our lobbyists filed objections to any of the other bills, other than the zoning?
Other than the zoning, officially, so he is aware of all these, I would, he's usually on top of it, and I need to ask him specifically on these other ones, but Barry does sign in as opposed very often, if not always, to the bills that we have listed, and even more so, honestly, if there are ones that, that are moving quickly, that we haven't brought to council yet, we, we sign in as opposed, based on the legislative agenda that we've had approved from council.
Very good, if there's no further, well, let's see, Mayor Protam Rusing.
Thank you. Recently, I found out that our hardworking mayor paid a visit to the state legislature, and I was wondering if he could update us as to his activities.
Well, I just went down to the Senate Caucus Room, where there were discussions about the concerns for ambulance services up here in Yavapai County, but quite frankly, there were quite a few fire chiefs from different parts of the state, where we see ambulance transportation being challenged and stressed because of the growth that's occurring all over the state, and being able to make sure that we have appropriate response times for new residents and current residents, a lot of discussions about how we could solve that problem within the current Department of Health Services authority to extend certificates of necessity into different service areas, where right now, there's usually one individual con allowed for a private transport of patients for ambulance services, and I think we're getting to the point where we, we want to be able to make sure that any patient who's experiencing a medical emergency can be transported in a prompt way to a healthcare facility that would be able to provide the necessary treatment that they need. So I think that, that whole issue is continuing to be discussed and debated, and I think there is a bill in the legislature, I think it was introduced by Representative Burgess, by the way, to modify the current policies. So I think that's probably something that probably needs to be looked at, or monitored by our, by Barry.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for doing that.
Well, it's certainly a central part of public safety. All right, well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Tyler, we appreciate that, so we can move on to a regular agenda, item 9B.
We do have public comment on 9A, Mayor. Tom Rusing.
My question was answered, thank you.
Oh, great.
Adoption of resolution number 2022, sorry, hold on one second. 2022-1808, designating the standard allowance for revenue loss to be used to fund government services.
Thank you, sir. Mark Woodfill, Budget and Finance Director. We talked about this, this is a continuation of our ongoing updates on ARPA, more specifically, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, which is where our monies are coming from. With the new guidance, as we talked about before, on January 6th, the most, the simplest thing and the most gives the council the widest discretion on what to do with the money is to designate that the whole $5.9 million award is to recover lost revenues. So that's what this resolution is doing, having the council determine that, and then that opens up the timing as well as the functions that we can do with the funding.
So it's my understanding that if, when we vote on this today, we're, we're agreeing to have these two sources of funds being able to be included within this designation, which really takes away some of the federal requirements within each one of them, and allows a lot more discretion about how we're gonna potentially utilize the funds.
Correct, and it is, it is just the Corona State and Local Relief Recovery Funds program, which is part of ARPA, they're all, they're both one fund, so it is just the one award that we received.
All right, do we have any, any questions or concerns about this? Sure, Councilman Montoya.
Mark, thank you for the explanation, I, there's no, I guess, just, this is probably an obvious question or an obvious answer for you, but there's no, we're not boxing ourselves in in any way of the use of these funds by voting for this, are we?
We're actually removing.
Okay, that, that was my assumption, I just wanna make sure there's no constraint that is attached to doing this.
No.
Okay.
Well, if there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-1801.
Eight?
Eight. All right. Oh, eight, sorry.
I have my glasses on.
I've got a motion.
And a second.
And a second, any further discussion? We don't have any public comment on this one.
We do not, Mayor, no.
Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Very good.
Presentation and discussion regarding staff recommended, recommended projects related to coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
So with the adoption of the last resolution, there is available funds in the general fund, we have discussed these several times, council has requested that we bring back more detail on these type of things, we split them down into two separate slides, basically, and again, just to reiterate some of the other comments that I've made over the last, I don't know how many times we've talked about this, but this, this year's been particularly hard on the general fund, we're gonna talk about that a lot more in two weeks at our mid-year budget report, as far as what does the 2023 budget cycle look like, all available and then some fund balance in the general fund is either spent already or scheduled to be spent in this fiscal year, which is going to limit availability for certain things. So with that in mind, staff has put together the list of, of recommended projects for council to consider, and again, realizing, of course, this is $9.1 million worth of projects on the screen, we can't fund them all, but there's just some significant projects you're gonna see as we pull the budget process together this year, that you should be aware of before you make any commitments to these funds. And again, with what we've done with the, the, the program, the decision on what projects to pursue, the decision on whether to do anything right now, can be put off until we include it as part of the budgeting cycle, so you can see what the total picture is before you decide, we want these monies to go here or there. Again, the, the action we took just before this has removed those time constraints that we had on these monies. So just another thought is, we just run through these real quick. Tenant improvements on New City Hall are coming a little higher than initially projected. We have a bid for the third floor improvement, which is around 1.5 million, and facilities is estimating another 2.5 for the rest of it, so that's another $4 million we have to come up with out of the budget. Public safety vehicles, these are vehicles that are public safety departments that are experts that we have in that field have brought forward that they need. They have not been able to be funded over the last couple of years because of other priorities council has had during the budget process, so they are a good option for, again, available monies, a mobile command center for police, and then Fire Department has a 75-foot aerial truck, which is 25 years old, sadly, I remember buying that for them, but can no longer receive safety certifications. And then there's recreation improvements, which are, you know, which are also important to the community, and there are also things that sometimes aren't able to be done during the budget process just because of other needs, so we brought those forward, some concrete repair at Ken Lindley, around 80,000, I'm sorry, Bill Valley Field, and then Ken Lindley had a tennis court project to resurface two of the courts and turn the other two courts into four pickleball courts, and that's about a $300,000 project. And then council, or sorry, Mayor Protam Rusing wanted to talk about the Granite Creek Corridor revitalization, again, that's a project dealing with that whole corridor from the middle school all the way down to the park, and looking for a grant, hopefully get a grant for a million dollars from the state coming up, as well as we have some money donated by the Jenkins family through a will, and with that, there still needs to be 1.3 million from the general fund to cover the cost of this project.
Councilman Montoya, you have a question?
I do, thank you, Mayor. Mark?
Yes, sir.
I think you accidentally skipped over public safety drill ground improvements, but could you explain what that would entail?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did, I went right by it. Again, it's another project that's been on our budget for several years, the, the drill ground, the, the shooting range, the other things at the end of Sundog Ranch Road are all on dirt and gravel, when it gets wet, the trucks sink, when, you know, it's hard for them to conduct training operations out there without it, and that's to take care of the stormwater issues out there, as well as the paving that needs to be done out there and that type of stuff.
So one of my questions was, is the plan is to continue those operations at that current location?
Yes.
Okay.
I would hope, if we're gonna put 1.5 million into it.
I don't know if you're doing a different facility, it's.
No, it's the same location, it's just improving the grounds so they can be used more fully.
It's somewhat disruptive to recreation, have a shooting range right next to a recreational trail and boating area, that's why I was curious if they were gonna be moving it to a different location.
Yeah, no, that would be significantly more, it is something that we have looked at over the years, but it would be a significant, and again, I know police do train out there still on the shooting range, but I believe they also use the indoor shooting range when available in town.
Councilwoman Hall.
Thank you. Regarding the construction, so when it says first and second estimate, that's for the first and second?
I'm sorry, yes, the floors.
Oh, okay.
I didn't make that clear, for sure, sorry.
And that's for doing both?
And again, that's just an estimate at this time, yes.
And the, so I'm assuming we took it out to bid for the third floor, is that how we did it? Did we do an RFP and all that?
Yes, it's gone out to bid already, and Tim Legler is here to address that further.
Oh, okay. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, how many bids did we get back?
So we used a job board or contract on that, and that's actually still out to bid, so the 1.5 isn't a firm number yet, that's a high number estimating, we expect it back probably within this week or next week.
And how many square foot then is the third floor? Just seems really high, it's a new building.
Nine thousand.
Oh, how much of its chambers, that's a good point.
So there's a good, in basically the south, southeast corner, that whole section is chambers, so basically the whole east side of the building is set up with council and chambers.
Oh, okay, okay, I'll, I'll get a copy of it instead, I was just curious of the clarification on the first and second, that's just what you guys are kinda thinking?
Yeah, so based on the bids, because obviously the cost of everything's gone up right now, so we're kinda waiting for this one to come back as a hard cost, some things have changed just in the past week, and then trying to estimate with Mark about the first and second, that was kind of our best guess, you know, hopefully by the time we get to that point, things are starting to come down a little bit in cost.
Okay, all right, wonderful, and then, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I, I wanted to ask if there's any way that the, you know, council would maybe consider moving up some of the recreation improvements, I know I brought up the baseball field before, but Ken Lindley, I know those are not cheap items, but they're a little bit less expensive at 80,000 and 300,000 and giving COVID and the need to be outside, and I think these projects, I think both of them really need to be done, is it something that council's willing to consider moving up for consideration, just so we can actually start?
I think the council has the ability to move up some of these smaller projects, particularly from my position, you know, being able to get this 75-foot ladder truck ordered, some of these very, very large trucks has a very long lead time on it, and we're getting to the point where the ladder truck we have is not even gonna be certified for use. So if we have a fire that needs a ladder truck, boy, we better be ready to deploy that, right? So I think some of these smaller things, we might be able to make a preliminary decision on, but a lot of the bigger ones probably would be more appropriate to be included in the budget consideration.
And we're doing that in a couple of weeks, that you?
We're starting the mid-year report will be in a couple of weeks, your departments are already submitting their base budgets right now, and then capital budgets are due the first part of March, and then that's all put together, the city manager and finance go through it and get it into a balanced budget form, and then we come back to council in May with the public workshop and discussion, so that's when we could further, take further action on the bigger items.
But we don't necessarily need to wait for our budget to move on any of these items.
You do not need to wait, if you do not want to, it was just a suggestion, since there are limited resources remaining in the general fund, and there are significant needs of, whether it's open space or land for airport protection, or any of the things on the second list here that we have as well. But with that, anything on this first page, before we go to the next? Then we put together the second page with some more detail on different projects that that could be used, I mean, they're not really staff recommend, recommended, obviously wastewater has its own revenue source, so that could do that, however, there is significant wastewater projects coming down the road in the way of a wastewater treatment plant expansion. These are all rate-based projects, trying to provide some relief to our wastewater rate payers. Stormwater projects, as we've discussed, is an area that we really don't have a fund source for, excuse me. So we have a few projects there, obviously, there's open space, Dorm Ranch, we've done, the council's done a letter of intent on that, that is going to take away from road projects. That is going to take away from road projects if we use the, any fund balance left in the streets or open base fund, which is fine, but some road projects might be pushed out, but road projects are also very important, that we have good streets. The Adult Center is another project that's been brought forward, so we put it on the list. And of course, airport protection can always use money to protect out there with land purchases.
Mayor Protem, you have a question?
I just have some comments as far as the facility improvements at the New City Hall. I just would like to reiterate that we have designated an income stream for that already. So the Old City Hall, McCormick Street, and we've had a lot of activity out by the airport, interest and upcoming sales for property up there for the industrial commercial area. So that's just one of my initial comments. Thank you.
And you're right, Mayor Protem, you guys have designated those land sales to repay the internal loan. This obviously is above and beyond the internal loan. So again, you know, we'll figure out what needs to happen to pay for this as we get through the budget process, but you know, the more options you have at that time in May, when we look at the whole picture, it might be a little better or easier for you to make decisions.
Particularly if we go out to a redevelopment of the current City Hall property, and they evict me from my office, I want to be able to have a place to move to.
Councilman Montoya.
Mark, I was just kind of, I guess, looking at the, I guess this is a question I've asked before. Is there prioritization from staff perspective on this, on this list? I mean, it would seem to me, public safety, the 75-foot ladder truck, I think it'd be hard pressed for, you know, that's, when I've gotten public comment myself, most people have identified having a 75-foot ladder truck as kind of a big deal. But are there other things outside of the public safety, I think, you know, that staff has identified as a prioritization?
Well, I think staff has prioritized all these projects. The question is?
But we don't have that much money.
Right. No, and you're absolutely right, Councilman Montoya, but you know, the budget process is coming, and you know, there's a limited funding there, so you know, I don't know. I like, like discussed, all the public safety vehicles, including the mobile command center, they have a long build time on them. You know, not, these things don't roll off an assembly line necessarily, they're all custom-made, in my opinion, which is worth not much. I would probably prioritize those.
Do we, can I stop you for one second, Mark? Is it, do we, I guess my question, given some of what we've heard today about this idea that everything is rising in cost, we're in a high inflationary period right now, are we even certain that we can get that ladder truck for 1.5 million, that it hasn't increased in price?
I believe we're relatively certain. We have our fleet manager somewhere, oh, he's back there, and his spokesman, Tim Legler.
So I'll talk to him, he can correct me if I'm wrong. So basically, the ladder truck is 23 years old right now. In two years, it's going to be expired to where we can't get it certified anymore. So with that said, if we order the new ladder truck, we're certain, very comfortable, we can get it for the 1.5, but it's a two-year build.
Okay.
So basically, by the time that one expires, the new one's coming.
Right.
Fingers crossed.
So it's kind of like on fire, not to, you know, use a bad metaphor about a fire truck?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Again, be glad to.
Mayor Protem, did you have another comment?
I'm sorry, forgot to cancel.
Okay. Councilwoman Hall.
Yeah, so like what you were saying with the fire truck, I mean, is it possible that we can agendize some of these items for our two week, you know, our next, in a couple of weeks, instead of waiting for the budget? We didn't really discuss.
Yes. Yeah, definitely, we could, if you wanted to direct staff, we could go prepare bids for the items that need to get bids and then ring them back. It probably wouldn't be in two weeks again if we got to get a bid. But yeah, if you want to direct staff to proceed and ring some of these back, that would be great. That's kind of the purpose of our presentation today is get direction of whether council wants to wait, wait on a portion of it, or proceed with these three things, and then we'll figure the rest of it out during the budget cycle, however you want to do it.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah, my comments would just be on the public safety, you know, emergency needs and the, I mean, it sounds like an emergency if it's expired in two years. It'll take two years to build it.
Especially if you have a two-year lead time to build, and you know, you have to get your order in, and hopefully it's going to be built and delivered in time before the other one loses its certification.
Right, absolutely.
I think it would be useful.
Councilman Moore.
Yeah, I know that this portion of our meeting today is, it's for discussion only and no formal action will be taken, but I do feel that we should definitely prioritize the fire truck for immediate council action as soon as possible.
Councilman Marusi. Mayor Protem.
Hi.
I'll get this right when it comes to this.
I just would like to agree. It seems like we're kind of moving in the general area, direction towards the ladder truck and that we prioritize it and move it along as quick as we can and get it voted on, get a good start on it.
Any further comment? Do we have any public comment?
I just have a question. The mobile command center, do we have one now?
No, we do not.
Okay. And can you, do you have any idea what that is?
Let me get Tim Legler back.
I can address it, Councilman.
Would you like to take his seat in the front row?
It's, Councilman, I can address it. It's during an incident, whether it's an active shooter or natural disaster, and it's in a specific area in the city, that running command out of this police department or the fire department, depending on what's the nature of the event, isn't appropriate or applicable. They basically run the command structure out of a glorified RV.
So this basically takes the place of PRCC and, or works with them?
No, PRCC still receives the calls. This is the command structure. This is like, it would be the fire, if, in a fire event, it would be the fire chief probably and his command staff, along with the auxiliary assistance of law enforcement, handling the incident or the incident command.
It's like a mobile emergency operation center.
Yeah. So this is a fairly large vehicle?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's, you know, it's not just major events, any significant investigation, whether it's a, you know, God forbid, murder or something where there's officers on staff for a long time. This gives them a place to meet and coordinate and then take care of whatever needs to be taken care of. And again, right now, on significant events, when they last a long time, we try to borrow one, either from the county or from Prescott Valley, but sometimes they're not available.
You mean Prescott Valley has one and we don't?
Do you want to just get two?
More often than not, it's the sheriff's department that we get the assistance from.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Well, it sounds like this is pretty important also.
Yeah.
Again, that's why it's on the list. But I mean, again, we're just looking for direction from council. If you want us to bring those forward, as well as some of the recreation improvements or any of that, we can go proceed with bidding and procuring stuff. They all will have to come back to you for approval once we get bids or get that. But just, we don't want to waste time bringing stuff back if you don't want to do them. So I guess that's what we're looking for today, is some informal, please go forward and bring back these five things or whatever.
Well, I think at least for the public safety vehicle requirements, I think we, here are consensus here that we want to prioritize those so you can move forward with.
Both of those?
Process.
Okay. Any of the recreation improvement?
Yes, I would, I would like to recommend the Granite Creek Corridor revitalization since it's been in the works. It seems like it's shovel-ready, and we can get additional matching funds. And then the smaller recreational things here, the Bill Valley Field and Ken Lindley. And also, our Adult Center needs a Ramada Pavilion. They definitely need community support so they can continue being COVID-safe and offer activities outside and also for public events or private events. So I don't know what you feel about those things.
And just to clarify, on the Granite Creek Corridor revitalization, this is the funding we're going to need when we get that other grant, which won't be until the fall, I believe. Hopefully sooner, but it's the federal government, so.
And I think, I think we were in a grant application cycle when we first applied for those funds, and we thought we were within the correct parameters, and it turns out that somehow we missed the date or something else happened.
So we're trying to get in it again. So I mean, if you want us to proceed with it, we'll proceed with it, but it's not going to happen immediately because we have to wait for that other grant unless we want to fund the whole 3 million from this.
Well, I know that the Adult Center and the Ramada Pavilion project they have out there, I think is pretty critical for a broad segment of our community. There's so many people that rely on the activities there that we had a pretty much of a commitment way back in, I think, 2008 or '09, that those areas outside were going to be developed and provided with different functions that the senior community was expecting. And as those services have been reduced, it's really causing a very negative impact on our seniors who rely on that, the activities within that organization. So I think this is one of those things where there is some funding available to kind of resurrect the expectation of those services that originally were expected. And then because of the, kind of the economic meltdown that happened, they were put on the sidelines, and they've been on the sidelines for a long time. So I think this is a broad service for our community that really, this is an opportunity to kind of re-energize it.
And I'd like to add, the board and I'm the liaison, the council liaison, has been actually working very hard, and they, they're planning on expanding services so it's not just for adults and seniors. It's going to be marketing more towards the community as a whole, more of as a community center and include everybody, not just this narrow group of people. Thank you.
So with that 1.5 and those other ones the council have mentioned, that's about the five, that's 5.1 million.
So I'm kind of adding them up as we go. I'm at 3.78 million.
You did it wrong.
You did it wrong.
Matt, I think your math's off there.
Yeah.
That's my legal opinion of your accounting.
I miss something.
So again, we can proceed moving forward with those, work out the details, and any residual will be discussed during the budget workshops.
Mark, can I just ask one more question? I guess, is there any of these opportunities that exist where maybe we can give a portion of the funding, but not all of it? I mean, is that, are there, have we identified that as a possibility for any of these projects? I mean, obviously, you can't buy part of a ladder truck, right? So that, that seems like a no-brainer. But you know, like the Granite Creek Corridor, if we provide some seeding to that and maybe, you know, look at other grant opportunities, I'm just throwing an idea out there.
And again, we are, we are getting 1.6 million, 1.7 from other sources on that project. It's a $3 million project, and we're just looking at allocating the 1.3 on this. As far as the Adult Center, I know we have some Adult Center representatives here that might be able to address that better than me.
Yeah, why don't you, Lucy, let us know what that overall plan is, and I think there's a possibility for some phased financial support.
Yeah. Oh, my goodness, thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for letting me come before you today. I know this is a tough list to go through, and we have some serious needs within the city to address, and certainly the Adult Center considers them as one of them. But I need to correct a couple of things very quickly. We're not asking for 1.5 million, and I want this on the record because we're looking for a public-private partnership with the city. And we have, I made a presentation to Michael Lamar last year where we, where I showed we were in a, we saw a three-phase, this is my original document, a three phases to the Adult Center. The number one and most important thing is getting that pavilion built. There are other things around the, around the pavilion that we want to be responsible for, that we want to fundraise for. But the main thing is getting that pavilion built so we can get people outside. We have suffered, you mentioned revenue loss. We fit in that very well. We have, where we used to have 13, over 1,300 members, we're down to 300 right now. It's pretty grim. And the reason is, is because people are afraid to come inside. You can't exercise very well with a mask on and six feet apart, well, now we start to run into issues with space. And so getting people outside, you know, certainly with the weather that we have here, is a wonderful opportunity to address the senior needs. And, and there's hospital costs that have been going up significantly for the last two years because of the lack of exercise, physical, mental, and social activities that we offer here at the Adult Center for between 18, it's adults, 18 to 90. So, but we are, major thrust of the, of the population that shows up is the 55 to 90-year-olds. And we've had issues with teachers, we're trying to bring in more teachers, but again, the issue is being inside. So what we're doing is we're, the, the reason that we have the 65 by 75-foot pavilion that we need to get built outside is because that mirrors the ballroom that we have inside. So any activities that we can do and divide up within the interior ballroom, we can duplicate outside. And, and this prepares us for any ongoing, and honestly, I have to interrupt myself, for the last two years, we have been saying that COVID's not going to go away. It's going to be COVID-19 or a variant or another type of virus from now on, and it's certainly proven true. We, we really need to get this, this population outside to be able to do exercise, to be able to be social, to be able, and I've learned from doctors recently that I'm talking to is physical, mental, and social, you can't do without one of those. You can't just be social, you can't just be, you know, have physical activities or just brain games. All of those work together for healthy, viable, maturing people. And, and we certainly have that. And let me just point out again, this is Joe Bane's own numbers, and I've been working with him for the last almost two years now on this project. 59% of this population right here in the city of Prescott is over the age of 55. Now, they are the voters and the taxpayers, and, and they also create quite a bit of extra expense in our hospitals. And so healthcare costs are going up, and who pays for our healthcare costs? We all do. So I would ask you to seriously look at this, really understand who we are and what we do here in the city of Prescott. And yes, we want to be partners, and yes, I've been out there proposing this for the last year and a half. I'm speaking to groups, I'm speaking to, on the radio, a lot of you have probably heard me a lot, and I never had any trouble talking, but this is an important issue to the entire city of Prescott. And so I appreciate those of you who are, who came, and I think most of you did come and visit with me in my office about this. And I have a rendering here if somebody would like to see it. Also, I have Doug Stroh, who's the architect, who came and offered to help us with getting this thing built, and he's the architect for the original Adult Center building. And, and so there's progress happening, but we really do need help with. And so there's progress happening, but we really do need help with this as a partner. Also, one of the things I want to tell you real quickly, is the construction for this, for this, with the concrete extension for overflow, is going to be about 850,000, not 1.5 million. So I would urge you to seriously consider this. Yep.
Lucy, thank you for all that information. You had said that, and I think I had put this forward to Joe at one point, when I was going back in us all, that this was on the list. Do you have an idea of the possible private partners that you could bring in for this project yet, or are you still in the phase of kind of discovering who those people would be?
Well, I have to tell you, it's, you know, yes, I've been out there talking with an awful lot of people. And I have talked with APS, there are several different major businesses that were interested, Sparklight is another one. And I've talked with others as well, but also as well, I'm talking with nonprofit organizations. And because trying to partner with people, you know, Meals on Wheels is one, right there, we, I mean, we share that building with Meals on Wheels. And so, but there's, I've talked with Fan Construction, Bennett Oil, Barrett Propane, Finley Toyota, Sparklight APS, and I've also talked with, on the nonprofit side, and there's much more than that, by the way. These are just a few examples. I've also talked with the United Way, and the Chamber of Commerce, and NACOG, and, oh, by the way, Arizona State University and Yavapai College, you know, trying to expand the things that we can do with, with the adult center, which is endless.
So just to clarify too, you're saying that it's not a 1.5 million dollar need, it's closer to 850,000? Is that correct?
850.
Okay. And that, it sounds like there are potential partners that would be willing to assist with that financial cost beyond the city, or is that 850,000 is what you're thinking that the city would come in with?
Well, I want to talk with the city. I don't want to dominate other needs that the city has. Let me just be clear, because I've been in your shoes, I know how difficult it is, and so I care about the entire city. This particular population, at nearly 60% of the city population, is a heavyweight on all of us that we need to serve. And so I don't want to limit what we might be able to do, but I do want to say that 500,000 up to 800,000 would be an enormous help to get this thing built. And then we can, then we get people outside and active, hospital costs start to go down, and we see a more vital community.
Right. No, I appreciate the clarity on that, because it's, I think, you know, being flexible, you know, we only have so much money, as you understand, so I appreciate that flexibility.
Councilman Moore, did you have a question?
No, she answered the question. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council.
All right, so just to clarify, we will proceed with the purchase of the public safety vehicles, we will proceed with the recreation improvements, and the allocation of the 1.3 to the Granite Creek Corridor when the grant comes in, and we will bring all those back to you as we get the procurements together. And we will, Joe Baines will work with the adult center to come up with a number for the Ramada Pavilion, and we'll bring that back to you. And then the remainder of the funds will be discussed during the budget workshop for final allocation. Does that, any, heck no, I got it wrong?
No, that sounds right to me, Mark. The only thing I would like to add is, at one point, we had talked about getting public comment on this issue, you know, or putting it out for some insight. Now that we've kind of winnowed it down to those items, I wonder if there's still an appetite for getting public insight on it. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Councilman Moore.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I kind of got the feeling earlier that we weren't going to put the Granite Creek revitalization at this point, because it wasn't available yet until we got the grant. So maybe we leave that out at this stage of the conversation, and just focus on the public safety, the recreation, and the possibility of the...
Great.
I don't know, is that where we're headed? Because it sounded like it wasn't available now.
And that's a good point. We could worry about that 1.3 during the budget process, and decide if that comes out of it then, because it will not be done between now and May.
Thank you for that, Claire.
And for the record, based on my calculation, Mark, I left out the 1.344, consistent with Mr. Moore's thinking, so.
Councilman Tenney.
I appreciate the comments that have been made so far. I like that, I mean, we talked about public comment, we've received a fair amount of public comment by email and otherwise, and that's what today is about as well, so I'm glad that we're doing that. But I agree with Councilman Montoya, that additional input, now that we've kind of narrowed it down, would be good. I'm also, I know we're not approving any of these today, so I appreciate the opportunity to get more details about the ones that we've expressed most specific interest in, to hear those specifics, and then to approve them at that time, if we're all on the same page. One of the questions that I have, I don't want to be the public safety poo-poo guy at all. That is obviously a high priority with everybody, as it should be. I wonder if there is a command center vehicle available for our use from the county, when those, I'm guessing relatively rare situations come up? If the pros of purchasing one of our own, in spite of the boost that we'll get in relation to Prescott Valley, which is, that's worth $100,000 right there, I'll say that. At any rate, I'm wondering if the pros of having that vehicle available in relatively rare circumstances that we might need it are outweighed by the cons of $400,000 cost, and then depreciation of that vehicle over time? I don't have any idea, I'd just like to get some more information on that. I love the idea of it on the surface, and I think we're probably all on the same page there, but that's one that, just a little more info would help me make a good decision.
Well, and again, I would, and I would point out, you know, obviously, you know, we borrow the vehicles when we can. I'd also point out that Prescott Valley is getting ready to buy another one. No.
Oh, my gosh. I take that all back. Let's go ahead, let's go ahead.
And it has been...
Are you serious?
I believe so, I heard that, but that's a whole different issue. The issue has been, it has been part of our vehicle fleet maintenance discussions, it is on the priority list by the professionals that we hired to take care of our public safety. I don't know if the manager has any more input. I mean, they claim, and again, I'm an accountant, they claim it will be used significantly.
Yeah, Mark made a good point earlier. I was concentrating its efforts for the vehicle on catastrophic events, but I think it does a lot of community outreach events as well, things like Halloween night on Mount Vernon.
Exactly, or even the downtown, the Wizzi Off-Road, having the police, the police are present, they're already, them having a place they can get together and coordinate, as well as fire, you know, these things, they are important. Is it 400,000 important, only if we need it? But...
Something downtown, police department is actually pretty close by. That's what I have, so I've just, you know, a little bit more information about how useful that can be.
And again, like I say, they claim it is very useful, they've been at the Fleet Board every year for the last several years.
That was very diplomatic. They've asked for this since I've been here, and I keep pushing it off, so. I don't know if that's a ringing endorsement or not, quite.
I'll tell you, I'll be easy to convince. You know that I'm someone who doesn't question if our staff come up with a need, I'm actually supportive of that, but a little bit more detail will help me. Thank you.
All right, so we could have police come back with more detail on that specifically. I guess, I'm a little confused, I mean, do we proceed with the fire truck and the smaller recreation improvements, or do we put it out for a public bid, or not bid, but public comment for...
I think there'd be consensus that those are projects that you guys were willing to go ahead and proceed with. Is that, am I reading everything?
I'm in strong support of the public safety vehicles. In my experience, when you do need a mobile command center, it's because you're dealing with a major issue, major tragedy, sometimes you're dealing with multiple joint forces. Let's face it, we have our own fire department, Prescott Valley does not. So if we're dealing with police and fire, and maybe other public safety agencies, and you're trying to coordinate how best to respond to a major incident, you got to have a command center to do that.
Yes.
Otherwise, you're breaking down in communication, that can have some dire consequences. So I think that's an important priority. As far as the recreation components, I think replacing the concrete at Bell Valley Field is something that needs to be done. It's deteriorating pretty significantly, and it's almost a public safety concern at this point. As far as converting more pickleball courts, although we have a substantial pickleball community, and we're doing national tournaments now and things like that, I don't think that meets the same criteria when we're thinking about providing some additional recreational opportunities, when we have some acute needs right now. So I wouldn't necessarily be supportive of that, but I think the Bell Valley recreational issue is important. And I think a lot of these other areas can be included in our budgetary plans. Councilwoman Hall.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to just comment on the public request. I know we've discussed that quite a bit, but even just since we started talking about this, I'm sure you guys have the same thing, I have gotten a ton of feedback. I mean, we've had our public meetings, we've had a study session, we've had this meeting now. I don't know, I think our staff, you know, this is what they do, you know, they know what we need, they've prioritized it, they've itemized it. I just don't know, I mean, if they, if the city came back, you know, maybe not understanding or just being, let's say, for example, shocked at what we spent on City Hall, so we get, you know, 1,000 votes back that we should only spend it on 1.5 million for the, you know, remodel, or the whole $4 million on the remodels for the City Hall, and so we don't spend any. I just, I don't know that that's really going to impact our decision, and I would hate to put something out there with us not having the intention, I mean, like, I mean, if we use Bodraki's math, we can probably do all of the things, but it seems like we already kind of have a pretty good needs list, not even just a, like you were saying, a safety concern about the concrete. I just feel like I've gotten a lot of public feedback, I'm assuming you guys have as well. I think the staff knows, I just don't know that we need to, I don't know what the plan was, I guess, for sending out for the public comment, other than what we've already been receiving. I know we talked about the website and things like that, but to me, I don't know that this is something that should be sent out for a vote to, you know.
I think if we let the public know that if they contact us and express their preferences and concerns, we'll take that into account when we bring this back, and actually vote on what's going to be allocated for assignment immediately, and what's going to be potentially moved into our budgetary process. So that's probably how we'll see more of that public comment, rather than extending this further for additional comment within a study session or voting session.
Wonderful, thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think today was an opportunity for the public to give their comments.
It was.
And how many people are here commenting on it? So we've given the public an opportunity by putting it on the agenda and making that public.
Again, this is our third public meeting on this, and as we finish it up at the budget workshop, that'll again be the fourth. So we have had ample opportunity for those interested to comment.
I agree. All right, so are we concluded on this issue?
Is there public comments there? Okay.
I'm going to check that first.
Good job, attorney.
No, there is not.
All right, so at this point, we're going to be moving to item 9D, is that correct?
Yep. Approval of city contract number 2022-149 for the purchase of three 2023 Peterbilt collection vehicles from Rush Truck Center, using HGAC contract number HT06-20 pricing.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Craig Dotson, Public Works. So I am here to talk about solid waste trucks again. It is not Groundhog's Day. This is a new item. So this item is to consider the pre-authorization to purchase FY23 solid waste trucks for two side-load vehicles and one front-load. So this kind of segues in with some of the discussion that you've just had over the last half hour, in regards to challenges that we're having as far as timeframe to get trucks built and receive equipment. So these, these three units that we're reviewing here today are planned and programmed to be in FY23 budget for a purchase. However, if we wait until FY23 to proceed with a purchase on these, we'll never see them during that fiscal year. We're being told 465 days for a build on these trucks. The previous one that I brought, the last meeting, was the emergency replacement, because we had major failure on a unit that was planned to be replaced also, and it failed, so then we don't have a unit to provide service. So we had to scour the country, see if we could find something that's built out there that we could buy now. It's not available. We were able to find at least a cabin chassis, and have a body built and put on it in order to get it by June, so at least a reasonable timeframe. With these, we're looking at the 465 days, we'll be well into fiscal year '24 before we receive them, and then we have the potential of putting the city and all of our customers in harm's way of having additional emergency replacements and failures on these trucks that are programmed to be replaced during FY23. So this, this request and recommendation by staff is to essentially pre-authorize the issue of PO for the purchase of these three units from FY23. We would place the order now, in order to receive them during '23, and have them in there before, hopefully, the others keep going and servicing us, and continue to supply service. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Councilman Montoya.
Craig, thank you for the explanation, and I think when the emergency use for the last truck came up, I kind of asked you at that time about if there were proactive measures we could do to avoid being caught in that emergency situation. And I just made the comment that this certainly seems like such a measure, so I'm happy to see that Public Works is kind of having some forward-looking vision around identifying challenges within fleet that we can kind of manage to, especially given the lead time that you're describing. I mean, that's, that's a long time to wait for a truck, so I'm glad to see that we're being proactive in the response to this.
Thank you, and fleet services is part of that proactive approach as well, discussing this and looking at all of our equipment together to make sure we can continue to provide services.
Very good. Any other questions? Do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, just briefly, we might have members of the public who would say, do you really need a mobile command center? And I think it's been answered for me, yes. I don't think we're going to have anybody say, do you really need garbage trucks?
Thank you, Councilman Tenney.
Mayor, I will move to approve city contract number 2022-149.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
All right, that concludes our agenda for the day, and I have another nice quote from one of our founding fathers, that I thought was completely appropriate and involved in what we've discussed today. "If we are to guard against ignorance and remain free, it's the responsibility of every American to be informed." Thomas Jefferson. Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.